Good afternoon, all. The Board of County Commissioners' workshop on long-term planning and solid waste will convene. Turn it over to Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Seth and me, we'd like to talk with you about exactly what you see on the screen there, this, the issue of long-term solid waste planning. And, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been talking with you about what do we have to do to plan for full-time population of a million people? And this is just one more of those conversations about, about things to come. So I'm going to turn it over to Glenn to give us the introduction. Sir?
In fact, I had 30 seconds. I'm so sorry. I didn't get a chance. Just wanted to speak up. I just wanted to say, I apologize. It was in the last board meeting a few weeks ago, and I missed Commissioner Manning's last meeting. But again, I want to congratulate Chairman Ryan, his, you know, his being here and also being part of the board and being chairman and everything. And I just want to also acknowledge Commissioner Brian Hammond. The last year and a half, we've had a lot of challenges here in the county between local staff and pandemics and everything. But I just want to commend Brian, because Brian stepped up a year and a half ago at the loss of Commissioner Kiker. And he did things that some of us, I wouldn't even want to consider doing, like the Commissioner Kiker's eulogy and everything. So I just want to commend Brian for everything he's done the last year and a half. We've been through a lot the last year and a half. Look forward to it. We've got a great team now. But Brian, thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for also being the point person with the COVID the last year and getting information out to the board and to the public. You've done an amazing job representing the board as our chairman. So I was going to ask you to say that this morning, I got a chance to, but we were moving so fast this morning, a lot of things happened this morning. But I want to commend Brian for everything, because he, what you've done the last year with the COVID and everything else as chairman is unbelievable. So thank you for everything you've done.
It was a pleasure. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And what a great team we have. It was, it was really...
And we're not done yet. So I, if you keep up the effort, I mean, you're still sending us updates every day from Lee Health and everything.
Will do.
Thank you for doing that. And if you have my support, if you want to continue doing everything, because you, it's been something we're going to continue dealing with, and you've done an amazing job the last year, the last nine months, I guess, so.
Thank you very much for that.
Let's start to get off topic real quick. I just got a chance this morning, we were moving so fast this morning, a lot of issues going on, the long-drawn-out consent agenda items. And I just wanted to make, take a mention to mention that. And Commissioner Sandelli, you know, you've been here for a year now. You've seen a world win for you, but you've been through some challenges this year that normally you would never see as a board member, so.
You know how grateful I am that I didn't take that acknowledgement the first day that you could be chairman?
You know, I think, I think a lot of things happen for a reason.
He's done one time.
I think a lot of things happen for a reason. And our board stands out locally and statewide as far as the way we run our meetings, the way we operate the board and our staff. And thank you to all our staff for everything. So anyway, I won't take any more time. Commissioner Manning is here, he'll be yelling at me right now looking at his watch, but I'm...
I'm going to take another 30 seconds. It really is a privilege working with Brian and honestly, working as often as we did through that. I'm not certain, but I would continue to send that information to the mayors, because honestly, you and I worked really closely during some really difficult times, and the information's great. And what's really important is, the community needs to understand what you all do. I mean, as a mayor, I didn't have nearly the same appreciation as I sit in this chair. And the more we educate this community, because, you know, you hear what we don't do. And what's amazing when you sit here now only two weeks is what y'all do. And I commend you for what you're doing, and the members are really helpful. And just continue to communicate to the community is really important. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. I'll keep on top of that then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I can try to give less than 25 words, Commissioner Mann, but...
I know Commissioner Mann is watching on television right now. He's watching, probably watched this morning, and he's watching this too.
I'm sure he is.
I'm going to give you another 30 seconds, if you want to mention Commissioner from the fifth, you talk about everybody.
Well, you know, you're just a legend. Okay, so I didn't want to how deep you want me to go, but you know, the working with your legend of your experience and everybody here bringing some to the table, but yeah, with your, everything you've done the last 20 years.
Oh, get out of here.
No, seriously, Frank, you know, you know, you know, I...
Your workshop.
I respect you. You know that. And we all love you, and so it's...
Get out of here.
No, seriously. So we all, we make a great team. So thank you for everything, so.
It's a super team.
Thank Commissioner Wilson.
I'm just proud to be here. There you go. Mr. Chairman, go.
Yeah, and congratulations, I guess, I guess, yeah, it was an automatic congratulation on your reelection. It's kind of forgot you had one.
How about we kick this workshop off?
Okay, Glenn?
Do we do some trash talk now, I guess?
Glenn?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Pendergrass. Thank you very much.
All right, Glenn, listen. All right, yes, thank you, Roger, Mr. Chair. I think, Commissioners, this one's pretty easy to set up. We are fortunate to have a first-class, integrated, solid waste system here in Lee County. And by integrated, I just mean we're responsible for waste collection, composting, recycling, and disposal. So essentially, if you set that job at the curb, Lee County's responsible for handling it. And we process around 900,000 tons of waste a year. We've processed as much as a million tons in a single year. But all of this has been performed really efficiently, because Lee County ranks among the very lowest-cost service providers for those systems that have a waste-to-energy plant. So that's a great thing, and we know that the board's goal is to continue providing that kind of quality service at low cost to residents and businesses. So to that end, we do want to discuss some potential capital projects with you as we plan the capacity that we need. A couple of shorter-term issues related to composting and recycling. And then, as Roger said, as the county plans for that day when we hit a million permanent residents, we do need to talk about the balance that we're going to strike between incineration of garbage, landfilling of garbage, et cetera. So with that as the background, I'm going to ask Doug Whitehead, our new, still fairly new solid waste director, who's doing a terrific job to walk you through that discussion.
Thank you, Glenn. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, as Glenn already touched on, talk about what an integrated solid waste system is. Look at our short to medium-term issues, which is compost management and curbside recycling. And then look at the balance between landfill and waste energy. And I'll reemphasize this at, we say balance because a landfill is absolutely an essential component in any solid waste management system across the United States and even beyond the United States. And we'll ask for your discussion direction. These are the questions that the solid waste staff and staff would like feedback on today, which is continue growing our systems, explore the feasibility of a South County material recycling facility, and expand Lee Hendry landfill while assessing the potential of waste-to-energy expansion. And are there any other considerations or questions you have today? So it's just very simple. I want to emphasize this at, we're not... We think of the proven technology which we've used to be the top recycling county in the state of Florida at 80%. First is an overview. This is our Buckingham, which is our primary customer service facility. All of you have been there. Again, the centerpiece is our waste-to-energy facility, which processes approximately 610,000 tons per year. But the other facilities, like right above it, the material recycling facility, which handles curbside recyclables, our yard waste pad to the right center, and right low, our construction demolition debris recycle facility. All of, the purpose of all of these is to support and reduce the amount of tons that we have to landfill and that goes to the waste-to-energy plant. For instance, our construction demolition debris recycling facility, that facility processes over and recycles over 50% of all inbound material that's going in there right now. So again, it's a, it's a great, it's obviously a great campus, and it achieves the mission that was set out over 30 years ago. And we have our Lee Hendry landfill. And again, the Hendry piece is because it is physically located in Hendry County, and we have an agreement with Hendry County. We manage all of the waste from Hendry County. So, but it is the foundation, as it says, of our solid waste management system. We handle ash from the waste-to-energy plant. The ash, in terms of tons, is about a quarter of what we put into the waste-to-energy plant. So if you put in 100 tons of municipal solid waste, garbage, into our waste-to-energy plant, we get back out about 25 tons of ash. We also take, in addition, some municipal solid waste. As we'll see right now, all municipal solid waste, which is, you know, wet garbage you're familiar with, from Hendry County is going to the landfill direct. In addition, when we've had outages at the waste-to-energy plant, we perform heavy maintenance. We take, we take garbage from Lee County direct to landfill. And then residue from construction demolition debris. You can see that landfill in the upper right-hand corner. We have an ash area to the center-left, and then low and right, of course, is our municipal solid waste garbage area. You see in between them is our compost facility, which is the processing we do. We create compost here, taking bio-solids from across Lee County, and also mulch from our mulching facility at Buckingham. And we combine the two, we process the two together, and we create a high-quality soil amendment, which is classified by the state as a double-A fertilizer, albeit a very low-nutrient fertilizer. And it's a really good soil amendment that is used by growers and nurseries across the Just one slide, which is, looks complex but isn't, but it shows why we are a fully-integrated system. And what I'll emphasize is that, as a county, we process everything that our residents disposes of, whether it's frankly flushing the toilet, wet garbage, recyclables, yard waste. As a county, Lee County manages it all, which is absolutely unique in my experience of 20-plus years across the eastern coast of the United States. And again, as Glenn pointed out, we do it at a very, very favorable cost to our residents. So what goes into our plant in Buckingham? Garbage, waste-to-energy, curbside, yard waste rather, recyclables, and construction demolition waste all go into our plant in Buckingham, as we talked about. Outbound is that recycling is bales of material that we produce, whether it's aluminum, steel, paper, plastics. We sell these on the open market. Right now, I think we've all had discussions, value of the material is relatively low compared to historical averages. But we do sell the material on the, on the open market, and that's done by a third-party marketing firm that we use. In addition, emphasize is that we are creating electricity, 60 megawatts an hour of electricity at our Buckingham facility. Now, what is it sending outbound? Excess garbage, at times when we're doing maintenance, mulch from our, from our yard waste facility, ash from the waste-to-energy plant, and construction demolition residue are all going to Lee Hendry landfill, as we spoke about.
Deb, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
We talked about, a lot of this has to do with expansion and so on and so forth.
Can you key your mic, please?
John? John, I'm sorry. Obviously, part of this is expansion and capacity. In Buckingham, do we have the ability for the construction and development of that materials? Can that be expanded on that site there before we start pushing that stuff out?
Our initial, our initial analysis is that, for instance, there is enough room to build a waste-to-energy facility, an additional one at Buckingham. We would probably have to move something like our, our construction demolition recycling pad to a different location.
Okay.
But it's a terms, it would be definitely a terms of priority at Buckingham. Buckingham, in terms of traffic, is nearly maxed out. We accept between 750 to 900 customers, cars, trucks, per day at Buckingham on an average weekday.
Well, everything is a matter of capacity, and we're obviously continuing to grow as a community.
Yes, sir.
Wondering where these limits are in each of these things.
Yes, sir. And that's a great point, is that we assume that we're growing at about 1.6%, which is about a median, long-term average that we've looked at. Some years, obviously, have been a lot higher. During the Great Recession, actually, the numbers were negative on growth in the county. But over a 20-year period, we've looked at some studies and chosen 1.6% as our growth. In addition, going to Hendry County is countywide bio-solids from wastewater. These are solids from our wastewater treatment plant. Again, they're mixed with our mulch and create compost. And right now, just emphasize this at, garbage is coming from our two transfer stations that we operate in Hendry County at La Belle and Clueston. And we are, outbound material is compost, which again is used across three counties area. We've had a chance to actually see it in use, and it's, we're very convinced that our customers are using it in appropriate manner. So this is where our status quo is on capacity. As Glenn pointed out, in total, we'll produce about 900,000 tons per year in total average. The best way to look at this chart is from bottom to top. Our composting capacity is, has about 60,000 tons per year of bio-solids. Based upon our growth projections, we'll be at capacity approximately 2026 at that time. Our recycling capacity at our, at our recycling facility, commonly called a MRF, you may hear that term used, is again about 80, 90,000, maybe 90,000 tons per year. And again, 2026 will be a capacity. I want to slow down and explain that that capacity is two shifts a day, five days a week, 10 hours per shift. And right now, in season, it'll be pointed out again later, is that we are at capacity from January to March at our recycling center. And then we have, right above that, we have our waste-to-energy facility, which is capacity of 610,000 tons per year. The bottom line is that we are at capacity at our waste-to-energy plant. And that is, that's usually wet garbage that we're taking in there. We take in a few tires and things like that. But essentially, we're at capacity there. And then the green at the top is a little bit different, is that that's overall airspace at our landfill. The landfill has, right, we believe will be, will be filled on the garbage and ash side in 2040, again, based upon 1.6% growth. So that's a snapshot of, if we do nothing, that's where we would be. The first near-term challenge is compost management. Nothing really fancy to be discussed here, except expansion of our proven practices and proven methods. And an investment in fiscal year '25 is estimated right now of $3 to $4 million, which would be additional buildings and additional pad. Nothing really unusual there compared to what you've seen and what we've done in the past. Our, where does our, where does our bio-solids come from? That's our snapshot for early 2020 and 2019. I want to emphasize is that City of Naples has found a new home for their material, so we've gained a little bit of capacity by, by asking them to, to go somewhere else. And material that's coming in right now is coming solely from Hendry County and Lee Counties. We recommend, again, just additional capacity at the plant, doing what we've done moving forward. We think that is absolutely the best available technology that we've seen.
Yeah.
Sir?
So Deb, talk about, this is, this is not a non-controversial thing, although we do it a little bit better than, than what some of the other counties around the state do. But Commissioners, I, was that a Florida Association of Counties meeting about a year ago? And Commissioner from Indian River County was very passionate about ending the practice of composting this stuff. And his, his colorful way of saying it at the FACT meeting in front of everybody was, "Stop bagging your S-H-I-T up and sending it to our county to be land-applied." And so at the Water Policy Committee at the Florida Association of Counties, they did add something to the guiding principles about they want to phase out this practice. And Glenn, maybe you can elaborate a little bit more on what that means and what, what kind of uphill regulatory battles we might face? And just, just kind of talk a little bit about that, so the Commissioners have the same level of working knowledge that I got at FACT that one time.
Yes, sir. Glad to. You know, first of all, I think the Indian River County Commissioner is misinformed. We're not sending any of our material to his county. As Doug said, this is used in the three-county area. Here, it, it's low nutrient content. That content has been proven by UF studies to be absorbed into the soil when applied appropriately, which our staff has actually gone out and conducted inspections to make sure that it is being used appropriately. So that's number one. Number two, as Commissioner Hammond stated, FACT did take this up. And what they ultimately came up with is, you know what? These bio-solids have to be managed. This is the most appropriate technology that's available today. All counties have to deal with this issue. And so where they ended up was a legislative policy that encourages the state to fund exploration of new technologies while still allowing counties to do what we do. And that is process stuff into class double-A fertilizer, which means pathogens are killed and, you know, this, this is safe material. So, so going forward, we're not expecting anytime soon that we'd be prohibited from doing this from a regulatory standpoint. But it is something, as the Commissioner points out, we just have to be aware of. There are some people who probably don't quite understand how it works, who, who want to oppose it. And, and we do need to look at those additional technologies as, as they come online.
I think wholly appropriate that we continue to use the best available technology to manage this waste that, that is produced by all of us, you know, in the, in the best possible way that we have today. And then, of course, we would support future technologies. In fact, we've always been kind of on the cutting edge with the adoption of the waste-to-energy plant on, on dealing with waste in, in better ways. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
You know, I also think that when we first met, that asked him his view of this, and he says it's a first-class operation. So we're starting with an operation that we can go to our constituents and say, "We're doing it as best, as good as anyone in the country, and now we need to be..." Imagine if you're, you're struggling with your existing system and trying to sell that going forward. It would be impossible. So I think we're in a good position to tell a, a good story going forward.
Yes, sir. I'll just add is that after you, you related that story to us, we did go back and look at research across the state, including the city of Miami. And the city of Miami actually used us as a positive example for the future. And we looked at other options. We firmly can argue, and I personally believe, that this is the best way to manage it environmentally and absolutely financially for the people of the county. Thank you.
Can I think out loud just a second here? You have the city of Naples up there, and I'm trying, I'm thinking of the geography. Collier County's sitting down there, they can't take their stuff to the Everglades and dump it. I don't know how much capacity they have, not necessarily just, this is compost we're looking at it, but their, their total waste disposal picture down there. I'm wondering, to what extent we partner with them now? Do they use any of the Hendry facility now? Or are they contemplating some in the future? Is, are there partnership opportunities, or are there reasons we should be frightened about their continued growth as well? Where does Collier County fit into this whole thing?
Sir?
It seemed like they would be a natural partner as you're looking to deal with solid waste, which is impacting, excuse it, all of us simultaneously.
Yes, sir. Well, City of Naples, of course, is much, it's a smaller entity. They found a third-party, a commercial operation up in Charlotte County that they're taking their material to. Collier County...
They're shipping right through Lee County every day.
Yes, sir, they are.
And there's, I mean, wouldn't it be cheaper if we could service them? But we don't have the capacity because we're running out of anyway.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We can absolutely look at, if we have capacity, and if it's the will of the board, of course, we can market what excess capacity we have on the open market. We do believe that, when we looked at our costs pretty closely, is that we don't think that's costing them a great deal more than what our costs would have been, what we would have charged them, rather, to come here. Now, Collier County takes a lot of material to landfills north, I'll put it, north of Lake Okeechobee. They have a, you know, they have a really high cost, and they have expressed interest in us in, in various partnerships. But right now, I think without capacity, we, we, I couldn't seriously discuss with them any partnerships or bring anything to you about partnerships, because we just don't have capacity right now.
Well, I don't think any question that we come up with here individually or collectively is actually premature, because we're looking 30, 40, 50 years ahead here.
Yes, sir.
And when I was having my individual briefing from these guys, I kept saying, "Okay, what can this commission put off and kick the can down the road so we don't have to make those tough siting decisions?" But for instance, if we were going to increase the capacity of a waste-to-energy facility, it would, wouldn't it make sense for, to be in a dialogue with Collier County about what their growth potentially is? And how long will it be cheaper for them to ship stuff by truck, or not even train, but by truck, through Lee County? When maybe their increased demand could help pay for us building that increased capacity here?
Yes, sir.
I'm just thinking out loud with you, and from time to time, you can say, "Okay, we've talked about this with Collier, and it doesn't fit because..."
Well, we, I'll tell you, like municipal solid waste, which is a primary fuel for waste-to-energy, Collier County has their own landfill, which has many, many years of airspace left. And also probably is that because they've been there for so long, I would probably argue that their rate is a lot lower than what we would want to charge them. We absolutely, if, if we built a waste-to-energy plant, which, now I'm getting way ahead of the slides, but if we built that, is that we would absolutely seek, look for material. But I don't think that we could go right now and argue and get out there and say, "We can market this space right now." But we would...
They got like 30 years' capacity?
More so, more, sir. Yes, sir. Charlotte County's in the same situation.
Yes, sir. Where do they, where do they go?
Sir, they have their own landfill right near the toll booths and I-75.
Commissioner, but the issue that we have in front of us, that we're looking at, is that we're going into capacity, or reaching capacity in '25. Naples comes out of it, it certainly gives us a little bit more flexibility. Inviting more in is going to accelerate our need to expand this facility earlier. Furthermore, having just went there, you know, one of the challenges we have is we're making some assumptions based on 1%, 1.6% growth. And what we had thrown at us is COVID and two effects of COVID. One, more people are here, so they didn't go home to their other home. We've noticed that by the amount of people. So you watch residential go up and commercial come down. Secondarily, you're having a migration now. Real estate cannot stay on any inventory levels whatsoever. They're all being sold. So I think we're going to only accelerate this, and a 1.6 is probably conservative, because COVID has a piece into it that's different. So inviting someone else into this is going to probably put us into the year of '24, or if we bring others, we're only going to reduce our capacity. And if I'm hearing correctly, they're doing it at a cheaper rate than we are charging anyway. Is that not right?
No, sir. Yes, sir. We would charge in the mid-40s, and I think that with transportation, that they're a little bit less than that going up to Charlotte County.
I mean, the interesting thing in this is, in any operation, you're looking at the various revenues that you potentially have and trying to understand the fluctuations, because you're running an operation, five days a week, double-shift capacity, based on some assumptions, with some tweaks to that, to the upside. And all indications are that residential is succeeding anything we projected. Commercial certainly is down, but COVID has had a temporary and then maybe even a longer-term effect, because there'll be more people migrating here quickly, so our population's going to grow up. I'm trying to get my arms around this as a newer member of the revenues, the fluctuation over the five years, as you run into an investment, what type of investments, not only here, but in throughout the entire facility. It's an impressive facility, and I understand what Commissioner Hammond said, and it's important to think about the environment. But, you know, what was most appealing to me is the load content that we were recognizing is so low in that regard. So we're protecting the environment, we're doing the best we can, but we need to give it some direction. And I'm just trying to get my arms around the entire cost or revenues and the expense side of it. And really try to break that down as best I can to contribute to this, because it's going to be a combination of using your own cash and/or, you know, as the need expands, what's that look like? And when you have such fluctuations, running two shifts, five days a week, it's really hard to project how to sustain that and not have operational breakdowns and maintenance issues. And, you know, having gone and spent the time I did was very educational. So from my point of view, summary, I'd love to understand the revenues a little bit better over a four or five-year period of time, so I can see the fluctuations, understand the expenses. But I wouldn't be inviting anyone in here, especially if it's, their cost is equal to or lower, because that's not fair to the other people that are participating. And it's also going to accelerate the need to expand this operation sooner. And we don't have, I mean, we can't go to a third shift.
Yes, sir. We have done some sensitivity analysis at 1.2% and 2%, and we can do other ones in terms of life, for, I think, for, definitely for compost and also for recycle facility. It's not going to affect the timeline, the construction timeline or capital timeline that you're going to see today. And, and really is that the revenue side...
Compost, right?
Compost, and also recycling, sir.
Okay.
Also recycling. Is that, because recycling's actually flat. To your point, MSW, wet garbage, we've looked at it since COVID, it's up about 7% to 8% To your point, MSW, wet garbage, we've looked at it since COVID, it's up about 7% to 8%. How that moves in the future, we don't know. But we do have the landfill, which can handle that overage. We're talking long-term today, but I want to emphasize that landfill has, we're in no emergency in any way, shape, or form on the MSW side. But I think that that $3.4 million investment is that we've looked at, depending upon, we're looking at building a single large building and additional pad, and that may be additional 25% capacity on the compost side. And with that capacity, we can look at third-party entities, charge them the right amount. And we, you know, we did one study last year, another study on what are our costs? But make sure that we charge them correctly, so we get some recovery on our capital invested in that.
And inside that enterprise fund, we anticipate that the cash will be able to absorb that $3 or $4 million investment.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I understand the idea of we'll build the extra capacity, and then because that we'll have unused capacity, inviting third parties in to dispose with us on that. But my question is, how do we write those agreements so that we can then phase them out as we grow to need the capacity for our residents?
I think we would have to use, sir, a very conservative estimate of our growth. But I can say conservative, I don't mean, I mean a high, a high estimate of our growth. So then we time the agreement with that. Compost is actually pretty easy to adjust to. Recycling, when we look at our plan, our recycling has a lot of ability, actually, we look at it about 12 to 15 years of flex in it too, which can handle, handle it, so we don't have to, we're not going to build something and say, oh, by the way, three years later, we're at capacity. Absolutely not, not, not the rule here. Curbside recycling, as we talked about, is, so the function, I'll talk about the function, that's our current operations. Like in off-season, we're running about eight-hour shifts, two days a week. We can run a Saturday, which has been done if necessary. Equipment, I do want to emphasize is that because the plant right now is about, the equipment is about 10, 12 years old, as a matter of routine, we are replacing equipment. And every replacement comes with a slight upgrade, but it is not a rebuild of the plant. Between January and March, we are at capacity. You know, this year, March was very different than prior Marches, but we also went down in March, and we did find a home for the, for a lot of the material while we were building. So what are the options, so, that we've looked at? Expand the present facility. Our estimate is, and it's, I think, a pretty good estimate, is that we'd get about 60% additional capacity through expanding as-is, where-is. And that's on the footprint that we presently have. That would cost between $16 to $20 million. Embedded in that number is, what do you do when you're rebuilding the plant over eight months? What do you do with the material? You have to ship it out to somewhere else. I can tell you for certain, every plant across Florida is at max capacity right now. So for us to get capacity, particularly if you look at our second option, ship it out, we're replacing someone else's material. So, you know, in the private, in the private world, that means we would pay more to push somebody out. How much more? Is that, right now, we're paying, versus, we pay Republic approximately $80 per ton to manage our, our material at our present plant. Shipping, trucking, and management somewhere else, we believe would cost between $145 to $175 per ton, so twice as much. And we did experience a bit of that in March, when we were down for like two weeks replacing some equipment. Republic gave us some space, but even with our relationship with them, they charge us approximately 60% more, including transportation, than what we're, what our cost is right now. So shipping material out is no capital invested, of course, but double the operational cost is our estimate, about $160 per ton. And that's actually based upon good quotes. That's a number we're pretty sure of. And build the second facility, we looked at some facilities that were built across the United States. A second facility, which would be approximate the same amount, about 90, 90,000 additional tons per year, would cost between $25 and $30 million. Not as much as you'd expect over expanding the present plant. And we'd also want to move it towards our residents in South Lee County, which arguably, that's where a lot of growth is going to be over the next couple of years. And there, and that's also, we want to move services closer to them. Second facility also gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility, so if one plant does go down for maintenance, we can shift material to the other plant, we can manage it at a much lower cost.
I had a question. So when you talk about that, the growth in the south part of the county, do you all also consider the amount of growth left in Lehigh Acres with all those pre-plotted lots? I mean, so Cape Coral, it build-out might have twice as many residents as it currently has today. That's a tremendous amount of growth. I mean, do you look at that as well, and think about where that, that garbage is going to go? I mean, you wouldn't haul that all the way down south, would you? I guess I'm just interested in what your take on Cape Coral and Lehigh Acres, those two big pre-plotted communities that could both double in size.
Lehigh Acres would go right down 82 to our present facility, because we're still going to continue to maintain our present facility and keep it up to date with technology, which would be a pay-go to, I think, the question that would come out of that. In addition, Cape Coral's in the same situ, same situation. They use the Buckingham, Buckingham facility. We believe that by going south, we can actually save truck miles, because right now, material from Benita Springs and Estero and the beaches all come up to Buckingham. So while we don't have a piece of land plotted right now, because that's, that's what, that's our research we have to do to provide you good options on that piece, is that we'll move closer to the residents in those areas. For, and this is for the recycling, curbside recyclables piece. What we, what we'd like to do is also, by moving that south, consumer recyclables, is that we could also process other material there, plus provide household chemical waste service locally for the residents. Right now, they have to drive all the way up to Topaz or wait for one of our annual or quarterly events that we have. So we think this has a lot of positives, and when you, I'd say, when you look at the trucking savings, it's, it's, it would be a good argument, even with the growth as they go up. And embedded in the savings is that when we get over 900 visits per day at Buckingham, we think something's going to have to give, we may have to build more roads. There's a lot of ways to look at it, but that would have an expense by itself, and just really putting a lot of pressure on that corridor also. Any other questions, sir?
Doug, so like you're talking about this new facility in South Lake County, can you just brief description of what it actually would be? Because I think a lot of times, a lot of rumors get started, and people think it's a landfill, it's not a landfill, it's a transfer station. What it looks like as a building enclosed, there's no environmental comp impact, because of the type of services that are used? Can you talk real quick about that?
Thank you, yes. This would be, there would be no wet waste, no wet garbage going to this facility. It would be curbside recyclables, low odor material, and it would all be processed in an enclosed facility with a setback, much like you see at Buckingham when you go there. I know the first time I came here, I actually drove by the plant, because I couldn't find the entrance. I just whipped right by it, and that's the kind of thing we're looking at. Good setback, good view blocks, enclosed building, so, and no wet, smelly garbage. The other thing I want to emphasize is that when material goes in here, it's processed and it goes, goes to its final end user, versus like a garbage transfer station, where material would go in here wet, would essentially be unprocessed and leave and still have to go to Buckingham to the waste-to-energy facility.
Right. So you said low odor, that's, if anything, that's from the yard waste, for example, from the plants decomposing and everything. So that's what, like you said, the place on Buckingham, it's been a 26 years, you've got 26 years of buffer in the landscaping, but even 26 years ago when it was sort of built, it was, it was not a eyesore for the area. It was obviously compatible with the residential area, compatible with the area around there. So I just want to make sure that we talk about this, that it's not an environmentally impact, there's no runoff from that, there's no exposed trash, like people, for some reason, think there's, it's a different type of facility than what it really is.
Yes, sir. As part of the preparation for this, we did go back and look at any complaints from neighbors regarding Buckingham facility, and traffic was the one complaint we've had in about three or four years, one time, when trucks got backed up out on the road, that was it. But we haven't really had any, any questions about noise or odor or anything like that at the facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next slide's going to tell a lot. No?
No. Well, we've already discussed this. Emphasize is that, by building a new plant, we only would add second shift way out in fiscal year '37, given 1.6% growth.
So basically, the issue that we have at the current facility, if we were to deal with just expanding capacity, would be that eight- or nine-month period of time where we would have to export waste, or obviously-
Yes, sir.
So by having a second facility, it achieves having an opportunity for those communities closer to that, to go there, drop off, you know, various items. But in addition, does it prevent us from having to, so we eliminate that expansion that we would need to go through at the other facility?
Yes, sir.
It also then puts us in a situation where we don't have that eight- or nine-month of double in our expense, and how do you put that into some type of agreement with people we're charging? All of a sudden, for nine months, your rates just doubled.
Yes, sir. And by building a second facility, you avoid all that cost, and you could avoid that cost in the future, like we experienced in March, when I think we're paying about $125 a ton, including transportation to process the material out of county during heavy maintenance. So we can do maintenance, we would still maintain the plant that we have, and, but it's not like a, a large, would not, we would not require a large expansion at the present plant. It would be, sir, pay-go, maintain, and replace.
I have a question on that. So $25 to $30 million capital projects, a big project, how do we pay for that?
There's, there's three options. We could build it. We, or some other. The second is, we could build it and have a third-party operate it. Or we could, I think this is very possible, put a design-build-operate, RFP on the street, where a private entity would offer to build it and then operate it for a long period of time. My experience has been 10 or more years is what that contract would look at, for them to invest their capital, bill us on a per-ton basis, and then get their return on it.
The interesting thing in this is that the way the debt for the county is structured, we have about $49 million outstanding in this area, and a good part of that drops off in '26. So we're basically eliminating $49 million worth of debt and going as an operator at $25 million. So we're only investing in a capital improvement, no different than our roads. The good news is that we do get a lot of financial flexibility, because the debt drops off.
Does it even out for the rate payers then? And so, so an instant, for instance, the rate payers are paying for that $49 million or whatever of debt right now, when that goes away and we take on more debt to pay for the expansion, is it just equal? Or are we still looking at rate increases potentially to pay for it?
I mean, that's, I think that's really where I was heading before in my little speech, is trying to understand the revenue, understand the various expenses, and that on the surface, I think you're right. On the surface, you would think, get rid of $49 million worth of debt, cash flow, replacement of $25, half the amount, should look better. I didn't know that. And I think that's an important factor we all need to know.
Yeah, yeah.
To give you guidance.
Right. And when we get guidance on really, number one, and number two, the compost facility is that we'll be able to put together a rate assessment, and also be able to tell you what the assumptions are embedded in that rate assessment, looking forward. And every year, it's nothing to do with, with me or us, every year, the department has done that. And every year is that, is, you know, the reality of population growth and the reality of what the county can do changes that. I know we discussed is that rates did drop, I think, and after, after the Great Recession, rates, rates dropped, and then they were frozen for a year in 2019. And now, you know, in 2020, they're, they're up 5% based upon that. Right now, we're still lower, believe it or not, in turn, without inflation, from 2006 rates to the residents. And we provide a lot of detail on that, once we determine the flow on the number one and number two. Number, the third big question you allude to is, is, this is sort of standalone, and it's a much longer, I'd say, row to hoe for us as a, as a county. We looked at four options on the long-term balance between waste-to-energy and landfill as a matter. 610,000 tons of that wet waste garbage right now is processed in the waste-to-energy plant. The excess is going to the landfill. We looked at four options. First, expand the landfill capacity with no expansion to waste-to-energy. Expand waste-to-energy facility with no landfill expansion. Expand the landfill and waste-to-energy, sort of a, my grandfather would say, a belts-and-suspenders sort of approach to there. And then also, transfer excess waste out of county, which when you look at it, is if we do nothing, that's what we would end up doing. At the end of the day, we'd have to transfer excess out of county after 2040. Again, the status quo, the takeaway is that our landfill runs out of capacity for garbage and ash in 2040. Option one, again, which is, think of it as landfill-only, shows that at 2040, we would still have a lot of excess capacity, 14 million tons of landfill capacity at 2060, when you look at it, after building that. This does assume that we would expand our compost and our recycling facility, and you can see that, you can see, going back to your earlier question, Commissioner, is that in 2055, an additional plant and the plant we have, our assumptions would be at capacity on the MRF side.
I mean, I don't have enough details to make that, but on the back of that.
So the cost for landfill-only is $35 to $45 per ton. That's approximately our present cost also. Going forward, it is the pro, it's the least expensive MSW option, 20 to 40 million capex over 40 years. That's an uninflated number, by the way. That's in 2020 dollars. And capacity of, through 2060-plus. There are some issues, is that more MSW intake versus ash, gas odor nuisance. In my work experience, this has been one of the things I've dealt with the most at landfills, is managing that. Our state recycling rank could decline, because we're, we would be creating less, we would not, we'd be sending a lesser percentage creating electricity from it at a waste-to-energy plant. And then there's a, there's a higher carbon footprint, which includes more trucking to the landfill from Lee County. Option two is build a 1,000-ton-per-day waste-to-energy facility in 2030. Takes us up to about 940,000 tons of annual capacity at waste-to-energy. I'd just say is that it's, you know, I can, and staff cannot recommend this, because it only gets us 10 years of capacity for about a $380 million investment. So we'll just move right past that. But note that $89 to $116 per ton cost upfront, most of that is, of course, capital cost and bond cost. Option three is both. Landfill, expand the landfill. So of course, the landfill expansion, actual expansion would be much slower, because we'd be burning waste in the waste-to-energy plant. You see the compost capacity and residual capacity is up, and then we would have approximately 20 million tons of landfill capacity in 2060. And new waste-to-energy plant in 2030, we would be in 2046, is that that new waste-to-energy plant, just 16 years after we built it, will be at capacity. That's sort of makes sense based upon our experience with growth already at the waste-to-energy plant over the past 30 years. Any questions?
So we'll just go over that again, that, so in 2030, we'd build, we'd have a new waste-to-energy plant come online, but in 16 years, it'd already be out of capacity?
Yes, sir.
And how much would it cost?
Right now, our estimate's $380 million. And to your earlier question about how that affects rates, is that when we, when we're looking at a rate review, when we're looking at a rate review, we're going to look at it with compost and recycling in it, and then we'll have a separate look at it with, with and without waste-to-energy, and see what the, what the cost would be to the residents in the rate. and see what the cost would be to the residents in the rate. So, but I emphasize again is that, you know, the plant we have was designed and conceived in 1990. In 2007, we had an addition, 50% addition put on for the exact same reason we're talking about, just population growth in the county. And here we are, 13 years later, and we're looking at this again with full capacity. Option three, the pros are longest capacity for waste. Our present plant also is 26 years old. There's some maintenance synergy that we would get with them. We do produce electricity. Electricity last year was about $9 million in revenue. Less landfill odor is... Ash does not produce landfill gas, which is hydrogen sulfide, methane, et cetera. Obviously, it's the highest-cost option. What I emphasize is that the landfill piece does get built much longer over time. And there's a higher operational risk because, right now, in the United States, there's really, I'd have to describe as 1.5 companies that specialize in this industry. There's Covanta, which is our present contractor. And there's Wheelbrader, which has an increasingly small share of the market over the past 10 to 15 years.
So, no chance for the design-build option on this one?
Well, no. We... It would be. We would have someone... We would pay them a per-ton fee, just like we are right now. But they would probably want us to bond it. I don't... Frankly, if you look at their financial data of past couple of years, they're not going to have $380 million to invest.
They've got to secure the capital.
Yeah. We would bond the capital, and then, they'd operate it. That's the most likely, and it's the most common method around the country. Option four is we looked at shipping material out of county. For the counties in these counties in Florida, this is the most common method of managing their waste. There's several landfills north of Lake Okeechobee, which handle waste from southeast Florida. And you can see that if we did that, our landfill capacity would end in 2047. We'd get about seven years from 660 tons out. And our ash capacity would be good to about 2053. This is for 660 tons. Annual cost is $12.4 million per year, which is above and beyond our present operating cost for this material. And in addition, when you look at it, is that for 660 tons, it's well over 1 million truck miles to move this to the nearest facility. Out-of-county disposal is $58 to $78 per ton. The $78 per ton number is our actual number right now that we have from quotes. We don't have contracts. We have just price sheets, so that's $78 per ton. If we decided to move long-term waste out, we believe overall costs would drop to $58 or maybe a little bit higher than $58 per ton. That is, still, as you can see in the next slide, it's still higher than the cost for running our own landfill. Yes, sir? Okay. The pro is, though, minimal capital expense, no loans, no bonds to do this. The con is, we still retain environmental responsibility for the waste, even if it goes to Sumter County or Okeechobee County. We retain it. We retain responsibility for that. It does have a high cost per ton. And it has, I care to say, by far, the highest negative environmental impact as we put all those tons on the road, driving about 115 miles in one way for disposal.
So, really, the issue is very little capital investment, highest environmental responsibility slash exposure.
Yes, sir. Just as a summary on costs, both on debt. So, landfill debt is essentially for constructing landfill, obviously, and then, closing landfill. And then, also being responsible for closure 30 years after closure, which is a federal requirement. Waste-to-energy, obviously, is very high capital cost. None on transfer out. It's the operational cost is slightly higher for running landfill, lower for waste-to-energy, once you build it. But very high on a per-ton basis for landfill, for transferring out to a third-party landfill. And back to our original questions, is that continuing to grow our biosolid system as we're doing it, where is it? And that would be incremental growth, again. We could adjust to new technology in the future, if it comes up. But manage it as is, where is, in the future. Explore the feasibility of a South County material recycling facility. And feasibility would, of course, be land and a detailed financial assessment and analysis. And then, what we desire to do is to go ahead and begin expansion process on the Lee Hendry landfill, while we can get back to you and have a good, detailed assessment of potential of waste-to-energy, both from a permitting point of view, construction point of view, and, of course, the financial point of view for you.
So, Mr. Chair, that's our question to you today. This is our recommendation for the going-forward position. As you all can see, there's still a lot of work to be done over the next few years to, before we have to make any, you know, final, final decisions on the ultimate investment for long-term strategy. But we really feel, though, this is the work that needs to be done today. And, you know, today and for the near future, especially the, when you get the third portion out, which is expanding landfill, you know, while we assess the waste-to-energy expansion. And Commissioner Ruane and I were sort of having a sidebar over here, and there's so many variables associated with that, not the least of which is having a really complete understanding of revenue streams and what they're likely to do over time, including the cost of electricity. You know, we used to make a lot more money selling electricity than we do today. What's going to be like 10 years from now? You know, hard to say.
You know, the interesting thing inside an enterprise fund is this is an enterprise that we need to have the best data or the best revenue to understand the overall expenses. And then, we could factor in, okay, yeah, there's this debt falling off, and it's this cash flow a year, and here's the new debt we're putting on, and here's the rates. You know, we're assuming that some of the debt we have didn't make sense to refi, but it probably is at a higher expense than what rates are currently and what they look like they're going to be for the next couple of years, at least. But, yeah, I would really want to just get my arms around. I think the questions you ask, yeah, I think we're going to continue growing biosolids. I think everything that staff has recommended, from my point of view, I'm in favor of. I just really need a lot more detail as far as the revenue and expenses to truly look at. I mean, we're in the solid waste business, whether we like it or not. I think, and, you know, I am not in favor of outsourcing it and having the exposure and/or liability from the environment point of view. I just... To me, we might save some money upfront, but in the future, it could potentially really bite us. And we're advocating one breath protecting the environment. The next breath, we're not paying attention to it. I think we've demonstrated, and you get a lot of confidence going out to the plant, I certainly did, in what staff's doing. So, I'd like to see us stay on that. Option number three, it might be more expensive, but it's hard for me to make a definitive thing until I start to really see the revenue or expenses.
Yes, sir.
But I think you're on the right course. I don't see any reason not to proceed that way. I just think the board would help look at the revenue and expense side. And there are some variables that have changed dramatically. You know, electric being low and COVID maybe being another migration here. Commissioner Hammond brings some great points up with Lee High Acres and Cape Coral as they grow, but it seems like we'll fill in the Buckingham and the southern need helps divert people traveling this far. And that's how we shuffle around. But it really comes back to the same issue is where is our population growth coming from? And the most likely areas are going to be in Cape Coral and Lee High Acres. It's where you have the most potential to fill up. So, we're going to need some ability to have some relief to go to the southern part of this.
Yes.
So, your solution is right on point, and it was really covered in my briefing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say, this was, first of all, congratulations on doing one of the best, I guess, most easy to understand presentations I've seen on solid waste since I've been here in seven years. We've had this a couple of times in seven years. And this one, I was able to follow along and understand. And now, you kind of get a grasp of what the real challenges are that we face. You know, going through each of the questions, obviously, it sounds like it really does make a lot of sense to continue growing the biosolids composting system to handle the needs that we have right now while we support the efforts to, you know, research new technology and a better way to handle that. I mean, it's not like that's going to go away. That is a product that is going to keep being produced. The feasibility of the South County material recycling facility, I think this is, you know, obviously, if that's what you guys think is the best way to handle future growth is to keep the stuff in the south in the south and process it down there as opposed to... And then, that would then free up more space at the existing plant to then take on the Lee High Acres and Cape Growth, then that, you know, that makes sense. I think the one thing we've got to be eyes wide open is, and I know you all are deciding of it. You know, people are going to make all sorts of false allegations without any evidence that the county's trying to do this or that in their neighborhood. And that's just really unfortunate that that is going to happen. So, whatever we can do to go above and beyond in that process to provide public input, to provide the rationale for why we're looking at the areas we're looking at, so that people understand that, you know... I mean, look, recycling is something I think we all want to do as a community. And if we do want to continue to do recycling as a community, there's going to have to be a facility that then processes that material. So, you know, we'll have to put it somewhere. So, I just think that's going to be one that's worth exploring the feasibility of, but help people understand that that's where we're at right now. Nobody's getting one tomorrow in their backyard. And then, on the third question I was looking at, is that option one, basically, then, that you're recommending? Or what option, out of the options you presented to us, are you recommending?
Sir, essentially, we should begin with option one.
Yeah.
And then, the board determines if they want that to change and morph into option three, which is both landfill and waste-to-energy. We, again, landfill's very foundational. I'm not saying expanding the landfill is easy, by far. We have many challenges there. But I think it's absolutely necessary because material goes to landfills across the United States. There really is no zero landfill place anywhere. So, it's an essential part of what we do. So, we need to expand the landfill and then, get back to you on the revenue and financial analysis, short to long-term on that.
Yeah, if I may, I'd like to add to Doug's response to Commissioner Hammond a little bit, too. So, on this last question you're asking, just to clarify, I think we'd be remiss without acknowledging that Mitch Hutchcraft, representing King Ranch, is here today. There are multiple stakeholders involved in the landfill. And so, when we ask you this question, we are asking for authority to proceed with setting in motion all of the different things that would have to happen to allow us to expand the landfill. We've got to negotiate with our partners. We've got to work with Henry County. So, it's, you know, it's not as simple as just saying, "Go do it," and it's done tomorrow. It's a process, and so, it's going to take time. So, to Doug's point, what we're suggesting is let's set that in motion now. And while we're developing that, we can further decide on the waste-to-energy piece. And then, just to clarify on the other two options, too. I mean, the first one for the biosolids, pretty simple, pay-go, easily accomplished within our own control. And the second one, Commissioner Hammond, to your point, we would absolutely do a lot of siting work and public outreach, and we would come back to you as the commissioners before any RFPs or anything like that ever happened.
Yeah. I think that's... I think that you're thinking in the same line, along the same lines that I am. I think, thinking about the third question, I don't have a strong... I don't have a strong path I want to march down right off this, right off the top of my head, right now. I will say this, it's... And correct me if I'm wrong. So, my understanding is, basically, since the early '90s, we have been a community that has sent now a majority of our municipal solid waste to the waste-to-energy plant and not to a landfill. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I don't want to go backwards and start getting to a position where we're sending the majority of our garbage to a landfill in the future. To me, that would feel like a step backwards. But I also understand the realities of how much another waste-to-energy plant will cost.
I think their term is a lot different 26 years ago, too, with electricity and...
Yeah.
You look how much recyclables have changed over the last five years, with the cost of glass and recyclables and everything. But to Commissioner Hammond's point about the... What are we going to perceive in the future about, you know, messaging? It comes back to messaging. You know, obviously, we're doing a lot of good things. Everybody creates trash. Everybody's going to need to dispose of trash. Everybody wants to recycle. And we want to do the environmentally safe thing. But that comes back to us, you know, giving staff direction about how to message that message of what the true facts are. If somebody else deciphers it differently, they go out, they're going to obviously say something different that's not true. It is what it is. This is the world we live in. But at least, we can provide the true facts to the residents and hopefully, get that message out. And they'll see both messages, and hopefully, people realize this is a fact, this is the truth, and this is, you know, false information. So, that comes back to, you know, our challenge in the future, as we do every day, trying to get the correct information out, the true facts. So, like you said, people will... That's why I was asking earlier about describing what this facility really is. It's not a landfill. It's this being-closed facility with the... Doesn't look very different than the schools or buildings in the area now. It's... You see some of the pictures. Some of these places, you see it looks like a hospital lab or something. It doesn't look like a recycled facility. So, it... Perception, again, it comes back to messaging. To, we use all our resources to get that messaging out.
Yes, sir. More important than ever. More important than ever.
I'm, I'll go back, I go things down, two things. One is, as you said, we are in the garbage business. I relate to me as best, a basic essential service that we have to provide into the community. So we, we have a deal that, the second part was, and I said it before, we have, we're in a fortunate position to have a best-in-class facility right now. Congratulations to all those who've had the foresight to do this. We'll work our way out of a hole, no pun intended, to go forward. Two other things, though, is I think how we measure growth, how we look at growth, how we substantiate the numbers, is going to dictate, you know, what our needs are going to be. And that's hard to do right now. We're seeing activity, in a lot of cases, as much activity in-state from people wanting to come to the south as far as we see from out-of-state. How long it lasts and under what conditions, I don't, I don't know. The last piece is, is, this goes to Kevin's wheelhouse, and that's the, the numbers, the financing, stuff like that. What's the financing, where it look like today, even though we're making decisions, and it's not going to get, probably get any cheaper. So, but the messaging piece, and I think we've done a great job, the team today, when we've talked, the whole different thing, the homeless, how we message that. All the work that we're doing, and how do we communicate that better? We talked a little bit about that before this meeting here. The messaging piece, when I first came here, we do a lot of great things. How strong is our messaging to the community? And that's going to dictate how we take credit for, or how we're looked at for where we are today, and how we build confidence going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with what you said, Commissioner Hammond, to, to really communicate that is important, but the way I look at this, we're in a solid waste business. I mean, we got to continue to give you guidance on the continued growing of bio solids. We need to certainly explore and understand the contract, the length, the terms. At least, we're going to have that crash course in '25, '26, where our costs double. So if we don't do something, one of those ramifications, what contracts do we have? How do we absorb that cost, things of that nature? And the third, really, you start off with option one, which probably migrates ultimately to option number three over time. And that's kind of where we're going, but I think staff is looking for direction. I think you've had consensus across the day or so far, in the direction you're all looking in. I just think that the board, County Commissioners, certainly would like some more detail relative to revenue expenses, but also, as I'm thinking out loud, just the length of these contracts we're talking about, so we understand just how we're boxed, framed, and how this looks like.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's an enterprise, and it's a business within the Enterprise Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Really what it is. And honestly, kudos to what you all do, because, you know, the issues we all talk about, protecting the environment, making sure we do it, you know, the first thing before I even asked the question was, you know, you addressed nutrient load. I mean, you just thought things that, you know, were novel, and Rebecca Woodgame and the tour was great through the whole process. Kudos to her, she's a bundle of information, really is. Thank you.
So commissioners, we will, with your permission, we'll, we'll create an agenda report to, and we'll have that in front of you on the 15th, to codify this conversation today, and we'll, you know, we'll keep you heavily involved along the way.
Could we get a pro forma of like, the last five years on revenue expenses, just to really kind of look at this?
Yes, sir.
A little closer?
Yep.
Yes, we have a budget.
And any key contracts that we need to be aware of that might be up for renewal and or expansion, or some of the decisions you all need to make, so we have an appreciation for that, as you're trying to move this ball forward. I think you have consensus across the board. We're just looking into probably getting a little bit more of the weeds than we had in the past.
Absolutely.
We'll prepare that for you.
Let me just say, we certainly all agree, I know, with you, that we're in the garbage business. If you're in a county government business, you're in the garbage business, if you want to or not. It's just how we, how we, how we do it.
You're a hell of a community.
But we're going to do some of this, though, by seat of the pants, no matter how much information we get. And I'm talking about the international market on electricity today. If you go, you go to Europe, go to Germany in particular, you're going to see they're, they're committed to getting off of any kind of an oil-based energy and going almost 100% to wind-driven. And you look at Mr. Kitson and other folks around the United States and the world, they're looking at solar, of course. And we don't have a good way of projecting what the value of our electricity that we're producing is going to be in that market that is really wishy-washy right now, very flexible. And I don't know if we get the information fast enough to make these decisions when we have to. We're going to have decisions forced on us when we don't know exactly all of the outcomes. You'll know some general directions, but they tend to change, like the price of oil, it tends to change everything, the birds around. So I want that financial information that you want just as bad as you do, and I'm just a little frightened that we're not going to have it all.
Not any, any, any.
When we need to make some long-term commitments.
I, I think we're going to try to get as much information as we can and make the best decision with the information we have.
Amen to that, Mr. Chairman.
It's never going to be complete, but in the same token, we're just evolving very quickly, and I think we just have, all have our own questions, and we'll feed off each other. And I think that's what you all have done, and, you know, that's what we'll do.
That's what our predecessors did when they built the WTE out here. And so far, it's looked like a good gamble, and I hope we do as well.
So commissioners, we'll, we'll have this in front of you on the 15th, and also, we have product for you that we have to produce, and that is, you know, a five-year revenue history, along with, there's a schedule of contracts in time.
And expense, yeah.
Revenue. Yep. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions, any other issues? We'll adjourn the workshop.
Good job, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.